Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome one to this regular meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of Claussen on Tuesday, July 10th. I'm going to open the meeting at 7:30. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I roll call, please?
Mr. Audia?
Here.
Ms. Fenton?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Cussera?
Here.
Mr. McHale?
Here.
Ms. Prowse?
Here.
Ms. Scripture?
Here.
Mr. Shepherd?
Here.
Mr. Watson?
Here.
Agenda item number four is the approval of the regular minute meetings from our last meeting, which was June 12th, 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the regular Planning Commission.
I have one question.
Sure.
On the minutes for you. Make it and approve. Second it and all that. I want to make sure, because I had asked the question, but I don't recall that this was the consensus. I know we talked about using our own personal stuff. Does it say any... I thought I saw in here where it said something like, "We also said we didn't want to get paid," and like, "We all agreed." Did I see that in here? Because I don't think anybody agreed or said anything about that, but... So I just want to make sure. I looked at this real quick.
I'd like to get paid.
It does say that in here, right?
It says the consensus was that they would continue to use their own personal devices to review items, and they did not feel they needed to be paid since the money could be used elsewhere.
I'm not sure that... Was that the consensus? We talked about it. I know the computer part was... I don't think there was a consensus that we all said we didn't want to get paid. I mean, I don't care. I think I said I didn't care about getting paid. I don't think... So I just want to make sure before that's memorialized in the minutes.
Oh, as far as the consensus.
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I know I'm the one that raised it, and I don't want that to be in there if that wasn't really a consensus.
I thought the idea of paying us is a matter of council's decision, and I don't know if they really have a say in the matter one way or the other. Personally, I don't care if we get paid or not, but...
I just wanted to make sure that something didn't get in there that wasn't, you know, accurate. That's all.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second for approval?
Support.
I have support. Any other changes? Good. Roll call, please.
Mr... Ms. Fenton?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Cussera?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Even though I wasn't here, I've read the minutes, and I will vote yes.
Ms. Prowse?
Yes.
Ms. Scripture?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Audia?
Yes.
Okay. Agenda item number five, the show cause hearing regarding 235 South Main Street, which is Tavern on the Main.
Yeah. Before we proceed with the show causes, the show cause is going to be a tandem with all of us in Kingsup. But before we go into that, just to provide an announcement, the agenda... An agenda item for the Planet... For the City Commission on next Tuesday is an RFP on planning. So I'm just making that announcement. And that is in the works with the team that is going to prepare that and so forth. So that's going to be on the agenda. Now to the 235 South Main. Jim has been advised that the owner decided not to appear to this hearing. The problem we have, you have a timeline before you...
He's here, John. This is Tavern on the Main. This is Tavern.
Oh, Tavern on the Main. Sorry. Okay. Tavern on... They're here. Jim, Mark and I have talked about this. In this concept, it appears to us that the moons are aligned regarding several issues that involve three property owners in that area. A church that has vacant land, some owners in the city that own some other land, and some other land that may come up where the apartments are going to come in with those containers which dropped by the board. The issues are complex. It's simple when you talk about Tavern on the Main and not complying with the site plan that exists. But it's more complicated than that. It's the parking, it's the congestion in that area. And I think it's important to take advantage of the situation in meeting with the owners and with the administration and with the planner to figure out where there are similar issues that they can all agree upon and discuss the risks that they have, because they do have risks. If there's no resolution, you're going to continue with the congestion there. So they're all identified in the same role on getting that done. And the problem is, how do you get it done? And that is what a suggestion that we have in going forward, rather than going through the show cause. But I'll let Jim talk as well.
Yes. This situation's... They went through the site plan review in 2015. We all know the owner of the property. He's been part of the fabric. I believe he was businessman of the year, one of the years along here. The site plan came to pretty much a stop due to multiple issues. We called them... This board asked for a show cause once before, and he submitted a letter saying that that was in 2017. And he submitted a letter saying that he was going to complete the stuff by June of 2018. So this is the second notice of show cause hearing, just asking him what the timeframe is, if he's going to complete the site plan. And they have multiple other issues that John just addressed with the parking and congestion in the area. So that's why he was brought before you guys, is because the site plan came to a stop, we're following up with the show cause process, and this is the actual second notice. I have no problem with working with the owners and giving separate time. We have allowed them to use the new barrier-free bathrooms, which I believe everybody is happy about, because the old bathrooms were so small. They have not occupied the back space of the building that they were planning on putting a new kitchen, a new seating area, and expanding their business. And I don't know if it's, at this point in time, whether it's in their business plan to do that due to the economic concerns caused by the congestion. So I would ask that if this board consider the administration working with the owner. I do believe the owner wishes to speak tonight to view... To express some of his views. I believe he has had people speak, or he has spoken at council meetings in this regard also.
I went back this morning and looked at our record. Last time Tavern was in front of the Planning Commission was on 5/26/15 for a site plan review. That's when Bob Blanchard sat here and video was our planner. And looking at that, I think the other things that are really outstanding to me was there's a problem with the parking lot, obviously, a minor problem with the dumpster. There was supposed to be a mural maybe on the side, and we have an issue with the sign. That seems to be the only four things that I can see that, from the city's point of view, that we have a problem with. The parking is something else we obviously have to work on.
Yeah. It was redoing the parking lot, the pole sign, installing a ground monument sign, the mural on the wall, and then finishing up the interior for the expansion.
Yeah. So it's very close. Very minimal work to be done here.
Correct.
I have a question. We keep talking about congestion. Isn't that because... Mostly because of Nextdoor, the woodpile?
Yeah. And they're a party that's going to be involved.
Okay. But wasn't... So I just want to make sure I have the timeline correct, because I came to this after, but I went and tried to go back and reconstruct it, so I understood what was going on. But they originally started as a takeout restaurant, correct?
Yeah.
And then Planning Commissioner... I'm sorry. The City Council chose to approve a liquor license for them. And somehow, we didn't consider the fact that people would actually stay there and drink and maybe start parking more than two seconds?
Well, we did consider that fact, because we gave them approval to put the addition on. We, as the Planning Commission, allowed them to expand.
Tavern or the woodpile?
Woodpile. We gave them permission. So, I mean, really, a fault wants to be pointed at anyone. It is our fault. We gave them permission to build it, right? They may have given them a liquor license, but we said, "Yes, we give you approval to build that addition in the back." And now we know, we can see that it's caused a problem, but that's really on our shoulders.
So we're stuck with those facts.
I was trying to figure out the facts.
But it doesn't mean we ignore, you know, the problem or the situation.
Wasn't even thinking we would agree.
No, I know that.
I was trying to get the facts straight.
Yeah. No, you're getting it.
So we kind of all created this problem.
There's responsibility that can be tossed around, but the goal here is to... Your perception of what we... You would want us to do is to develop a game plan. Show it to you, so you're on board of what the game plan is. And then keep the status going on the implementation of that plan, so you're on board. Because you are important body in this city, and you ought to be informed of what the strategy is that's being used or going to be used.
Which of these four weren't done?
Pardon?
Which of these four weren't done? The four that Greg just talked about?
All of them currently aren't done.
So the dumpster, the sign, whatever they were supposed to do to parking?
Mural and redo.
And minor... Oh, the mural.
Yeah.
And so the mural has nothing to do with congestion?
No.
Dumpster?
Well, that's what... It's a separate but combined issue. The site plan and the congestion.
Sign.
The sign would be removing a pole sign and installing a ground monument sign.
Is that part of congestion too, or...
None of them affect the condition problem.
That's not part of congestion, but why would he make an investment if the congestion is causing his business harm? Why would he continue on with the site plan review process?
Site plan review or implementation?
Implementation.
Okay.
You want to hear from the representative?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Tom, you can do it.
All right. Spoke by.
Actually, a lot of the issues that you brought up, that's exactly what I have written down in here. My issue with what I... You have just said, and I don't want to argue, and I'm not here to argue, and he's not here to argue, is that this has been going on for a year and a half, okay, with the problem with the parking lot. There is no solution to the problem with the parking lot besides the fact that he owns that parking lot. And it's not just the woodpile that's using the parking lot. It's the whole city. I have people that will park in the middle of the parking lot, and they will tell me that they feel they can park there, because there's not a sign there. He spent $2,000 to surround the parking lot with signs. I did it all the legal way. I called the police, I called the city, I talked to the mayor, and I've been pounded cars, I've been put on Facebook saying that I'm a nasty, you don't even want to know person. I've had Madison Heights Police park right in front of a tow sign to where I walked over there, and I told them, "You've got to be kidding me. You're going to..." And went to the woodpile. "You're a policeman, and you're going to park right in front of a tow sign and go over there and eat?" Because supposedly, he's a... You know, it's not just the, you know, woodpile people. It's everybody in the city. He pays a ton of taxes, and it's his parking lot. It's not your parking lot. It's not the woodpile's parking lot. It's his parking lot. He's losing anywhere between $300 a day, and on the weekend, more than that, in his business and out of my pocket, too. You know, that's how I make a living. That's how my... All my servers make a living. You know? If our parking lot's full because there's customers out there trying to come in, and they drive by and say, "Oh, they're so busy, it's... We're going to wait forever." And it's not even our customers, then we're losing money. It'd be like you not being able to go to work. You're not... You don't get your paycheck, because you can't park out there, because the people that are in the soccer field are parking in your parking spot. You know? And then his taxes were raised another $10,000. For what? He's already way over budget from what, you know, when we first put the plans in. I don't know whose fault it is, if it's our architect's fault or somebody, but I would like somebody to explain the fact that we get our permit pulled, we break ground, and within a week, 10 days, he came and tagged us and tells us that we have to have a storm drain put in. Well, why would we get a permit that you... And then 10 days later, he's told that we had to put a storm drain in from the existing building that's going to go up to the street. The cheapest way to do it is $30,000. So he goes and does it. Now you want him to see... You said that our parking lot is not sealed or whatever? That the four things are that the parking lot that's not sealed, the sign, the dumpster area, which I have no issue with that. I can get that taken care of and no problem. Okay? The sign, he has no problem taking the sign down. Okay? But the thing is, is that we're in the downtown development. Supposedly, we're not allowed to have a digital sign. Don't ask me why. They said it's a distraction to traffic or whatever. But he has good taste in things. It's not like he's going to put a... You know, he wants to advertise things on the ground on a digital sign. It's... He's almost better off not being in the downtown development. That's what's caused the problem. The woodpile's allowed to do whatever they want. They're not in the downtown development. You guys let him, like this lady said, they... When they first started, Bubba came over to me and he asked me, "What do you think about, Rhonda, what would you think about if... When they were just a takeout place? If people came over and got their food, would you consider letting them come over and bring our food on your patio and get a drink?" I go, "Absolutely not. Why would I do that? Why would I let somebody bring their food over to my patio and buy a beer? No, absolutely not." You know? So then, like she said, you go and give them... Let them build a bar or whatever that is. Then they enclose it. Then supposedly, I don't know. I asked Joan one time. She said it wasn't the council, it wasn't the city, that it was the state or whatever. Whoever gave them the liquor license, there was no reason to give them a liquor license, none whatsoever. They have five parking spots, you know? And he is willing to do everything and has done everything that you people want. He is the nicest guy in the world, has given everything. Anytime you people came in for money, donations, he would give it to you. But he's done. I mean, it's... He's frustrated, you know? You people... We've been dealing this for a year and a half. Like with the last council meeting I was here, I told the mayor. I said, "We're doing our job. Who do I call to make sure that you're doing your job? Because it's... You're not. You're not. You've made a mess of it." You... I mean, it's his property. It's not the city's property. He pays taxes on it. Then don't... You know? Like I told, I could talk to Tim, the owner, personally, and I told him, "Buy that land next door." But the guy that bought it did it on purpose. He's not going to sell it as a part.
He won't sell to him yet.
Yeah. So we have to pay the price. And then the residents on Tacoma, the one lady sold her house about right behind us, because she couldn't even get out of her driveway to go to her treatments for her cancer, and asked us if we would buy the house. We said, "We'd love to buy it, but what are we going to do with it? It's going to give us a headache just as much as you." I mean, you know, what, so we can make our parking lot bigger, so the woodpile can have more parking? And then Tim tells me, "Oh, I don't have the money for... To buy a... Spend a quarter million dollars on a parking lot. Oh, what time he has... He's invested." As of now, in here, he has 1.5 million in the place before even the construction started. He's put $700,000 more into it, and it's going to take another $300,000 to finish, because we ran... You know, where's the paperwork from one... The previous owner? We get into a wall, there's no junction boxes, there's no... There's bare wires. There was a gas line that was from the existing fireplace, ran through the landscaping. You're lucky the place never caught on fire. When he does something, he does it right. He doesn't do nothing, you know, halfway. It's done properly, and he is obeyed by everything that you people have asked him to do. You know? Like when we did the windows. I was at... I came up here, I was informed that he was supposed to get $5,000 for the front. He says that we never got that check. I don't know. I don't do the book part of it. He said that we never got that check. We never got the $2,500 for the side of the building. And the landscaping that, in the front, that you... That the city owns now, that he used to own it, we gave to the DDA, looks like it's a disaster. When he had it, it was beautiful. Had Japanese maples, green, taken care of. You got... They don't even water it. And then you're going to nitpick him about, you know, "I got a quote on the driveway ceiling. It's going to be like $2,000." He has no issue whatsoever doing what he's supposed to do, but you people need to stand up to your end of the deal. And you have him. And it's been two years, and it's always a runaround. Like, you know, like, "Oh, don't... We're not going to settle it today. We're not going to do it today." Well, how long is it going to take? You know, it just gets worse and worse and worse and worse.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah. This is something we're going to have to look into deeper. Something that was very similar to this was the Echo parking lot. A lot of people are going to Echo, and they're parking there, and they're going to Noble Fish and the other stores there. And what they... Their solution was to hire a security guard.
Okay. Then you pay for it.
And post signs. I'm saying that's not...
I don't have them...
I'm saying that's not the best cure, but that's what...
Right.
That was their approach.
Okay. But why should he have to pay another employee at least $10 to $15 an hour? I have a job to do when I'm there. I don't have time to be running out and making sure that people aren't parking in the back. I have to keep an eye on the whole restaurant between...
It's not the best solution. It would seem to work for them for a short period of time.
Okay. Then you pay for it. Because you guys caused the problem, you pay for it. Write me a check every week when I... I'll sign you the bill.
Can I just ask a question? So somebody said the date that we agreed the site plan? He said 5/26/15.
5/26/15.
And when did Woodpile open?
They opened... Well, they were in... They were doing work and construction and stuff, and then when they got it open, they were a to-go place probably for not even two months, and then all of a sudden, they started building this bar, and they thought, you know, and then...
But hold on, hold on. So they... We had the agreement for the site plan and the things that needed to be done, and then I assume a TCO was organized in lieu of having that done?
You have to look at your paperwork. I don't know.
I'm asking this... I'm asking Mr. Albus.
We have allowed them to occupy the new bathrooms while they were going through the process. It was a need for that location, and they've provided barrier-free bathrooms, so we let them occupy that. Currently, they can't occupy the rest, the addition on the back, or occupy the kitchen until they complete the site plan review process.
I mean, site plan implementation process.
Implementation process.
And that's those four items?
Pretty much, yes.
Pretty much.
So why can't we... I don't understand, because I went in there and found out the kitchen was closed, and then I was told the story. So why can't they just use the kitchen? Is that just a way of saying leverage?
Punishment.
I mean, if we're trying... If we're... If you're trying to create space to work out these issues, why can't they use the kitchen? There's no health issues, are there?
It's space inside the building for additional tenants or patrons? Sorry.
There's not going to be a single table for a patron in a kitchen.
Right. There's... So why would they implement something that they can't get money?
Your owner's raising his hand.
He can... He can come up to the mic.
I'm just, before we move on, I just... I'm trying to understand... The owner understood the items that needed to be finished before they could occupy the kitchen, right?
Yeah. We've been... The entire...
It's not new, but this is the first time I've heard anything about the congestion or any concerns from the owner about that. I don't know. Maybe I missed a meeting. I'm not sure.
As far as congestion? Oh, that's been a topic for a while.
No, but the first time that they have approached the commission to ask for help and to say that this was preventing them from implementing...
I've been at council meetings twice for this. I didn't know I was supposed to.
This body. This body. I'm trying to understand where the disconnect is, because it seems like there wasn't any concern about finishing the site plan items until there was a show cause. And when there was a show cause, then all of a sudden, the congestion is an issue and things can't be completed.
I disagree with that. I disagree with that. No, I think as far as they've approached the city, that's the reason why we had the traffic study a couple of weeks ago, maybe it was two months ago, right? And part of that was this issue, right?
Right. For the parking lot, but why were the other three things not done in the time before?
Because they don't want us to have a digital sign, first of all, and there's no reason to...
So there is a concern about the sign?
Yes.
Okay. Just trying to break this down, so we all understand what the barriers are.
Which has nothing to do with congestion. It has to do with sign style.
So the dumpster, you don't have a concern with doing?
We don't have a concern of doing anything that's supposed to be done.
Okay.
We're not going to add a ton of seats.
Okay.
It's just, the way I've made the place is, first of all, I didn't have handicap bathrooms.
Right.
So I had to have that.
Yes.
Okay? To accommodate the people. And I didn't just make a half and bathrooms. I did a nice job doing it, so people can come in and be invited and they can fit into the bathrooms, not like the other ones. Now, the reason that I want to do the kitchen, it's not that I'm going to have seating back Now, the reason that I wanna do the kitchen, it's not that I'm gonna have seating back there. I wanna put a state-of-the-art dishwasher from a sanitized point of view. And then I wanna put everything correct. So that way, each time I'm gonna do something, the electrical inspector is gonna come, the plumber is gonna come, the health department is gonna come. So each phase that's gonna be done, I want it done correct. I'm not gonna sit here and do something behind somebody's back like the previous owner. Took a guy from the bar that was drinking a beer and he's a electrician. He gave him two beers and he connected the wires. And then I got stuck with that. You guys don't understand that, you've seen the movie Money Pit, right? With Shelley Long? That's what I inherited in that place. So everything that I have done in that place, I could not fix. It has to be brand-new. From A to Z. From the water, from the gas line, from the electrical point of view. It, it can't be corrected. Everything has to be run correct. And Howie will tell you, when we took out a part where the old bathrooms were, there were so many wires up there. It's like you took 10,000 pounds of spaghetti, threw it on the ceiling, and it was coming down. So I have to have special people to come in, locate those wires. Where are they gonna go, so we don't catch on fire? The fireplace in the back. I had to dismantle that because it was a, it was a hazard, ready to blow up. That other fireplace that was there, it had beer wires underneath it because he had an old TV there. And the reason that I put a fireplace there is because he had the old boiler. And the old boiler was not putting enough, enough heat. And I had to get that inspected. And once we got up there, we said, the only way that we can heat the place is we have to put in brand-new units. Two brand-new units, which we never expected to put in. So now, you're not talking one and two dollars. You're talking thousands and thousands and thousands. Okay? So it's not like, I'm not gonna spend $2,000 to stripe the parking lot or to do the awnings. And the way the architect designed the awnings does not go with a place that we have. So we wanna reseam bits and better awnings. So that way, when people are driving in Claussen, they can say, wow, this looks beautiful. This looks nice. This looks inviting. And I wanna put up a sign. Now, the car show is coming up, right? I wanna put up a sign where it says, please come and join us for the car show. Please come and join us for this. Uh, join us for the fireworks. Join us for this, join us for that. And every time there is an event in downtown that happens, they use my parking lot because I'm closed on the holidays. Okay? And it's a disaster the next day. I have to pay people to clean that up. Who, who cleans it up? Nobody. I don't complain. And I'm not here to complain. And I'm not here for you guys to feel sorry for me. Okay? But every time I wanna do something with a place, regardless if it's a health issue, he knows. Howie knows, I mean, they've known me for 19 years I've been there. Okay, I'm not there just to fix up the place and go. If that was the case, I could've left it the way it is. It is, I had it paid off. There's thousands of people that want the place. But that wasn't my point. My point was, I wanna fix a nice place. And in order for me to do a nice place, I have to have the correct tools to work with. Would you put a million dollars into an establishment to go out there and chase people and verbally abuse you? Okay, fine, I'm a man. I don't care if somebody tells me to go, whatever. But her, my wife, the other girls that work there, that's not right. And with my tavern that I have, I almost beat the crap out of this one guy one time. Cause he took up four parking spaces with a trailer and he comes out with a bag eating. And I said, sir, you can't park here, it's a private parking lot. Well, where am I supposed to park? I said, that's your problem, not mine. I said, I can call the police and get you towed. He said, you call the police and I'll tell them you're abusing me. Okay? Put yourself in my shoes.
Yeah, it's a difficult position. It's, it's, the city can't do anything about that.
I, I understand that, but, but the city has created that problem.
Right.
So now, what am I gonna do to correct it? And what are you guys gonna do to correct it? That's why we're here today, to correct a problem.
Yep.
Okay?
Do you have some ideas, things that you think?
There is no ideas. The only ideas is, is if we put a sign, right? Where the entrance are, saying entrance for Tavern on the Main only? Or if I do a decorative fence around it, looks like the patio with a brick and make it look nice. Part of this, I have to identify that it is my parking space, but you're talking 45, 50,000 dollars to do that.
You're gonna run into the same problem that, that Roy Oaks running into right now. People are leaving the city because of the parking issues.
You know, my cousin is an attorney. He's an attorney. And he represents Vancetta Grill. Okay? Originally, before Vancetta Grill opened up, they didn't have no parking spaces. But in order for them to get the permit, what did they do? They went and bought two parking spaces from Jim, two parking spaces from Tom, two parking spaces from Howie. And they got their permit, right? So now, when the place is full of parking, they park in front of the streets. And people are mad. Four people had to sell their house. I talked to my attorney today about it. He says, Tom, it's a mess over there. And we're trying to prevent the same mess. Cause they park all over. One morning, for instance, they had a cookout barbecue, right? I went in there at 7:30 in the morning. I can't even find a parking space to park my own car. Everybody parked in the parking lot.
Yeah.
Thinking it's theirs. Put yourself in my shoes.
No, you're right, no, I.
What am I gonna do? Okay, would you spend extra money to do anything to the place? Okay, say, I striped the parking lot. I'm gonna stripe the parking lot for who? To go chase people out of it?
I understand your point.
I can't find a solution.
I, I also understand your frustration. I, I would look to the city staff to jump in here. I mean, I, I think that all we can do is, is do the action that's in front of us right now. I heard Mr. Kingsep say that there's an interest in getting all the parties together to deal with this. But our job is to enforce the ordinances and I'm not sure how we can go forward.
Well, I can tell you right now, the Woodpile isn't willing to do anything about it. I've discussed it with them.
We called them up one time and they said, you're leasing the place.
Yeah, they said, oh, you lease that parking lot. I said, he does not lease the parking lot.
Okay, if we can move beyond the parking lot issue.
Let me just address this issue. What has been said to you speaks volumes of the issues that exist. And it also speaks volumes of the potential areas of resolution. And that's why this meeting is necessary. The barbecue place may be resistant, but I'm not willing to give up on that without really forcing them to come to the table. And that's what you do in this situation.
When you say, John, when you say they may be resistant, I'm not sure what you mean by that. What are they resisting? When you say the barbecue place may be resistant, what are they resistant to?
I don't know. They said, they won't be.
Oh, okay.
But, you know, I, I disregard that.
They're resistant to the fact that they're, that they, they, they feel they have enough parking. And that's not their problem, that they're using the parking lot.
And on those kinda things, I just disregard those. You know, I, they're gonna be invited. And there are always ways to, to manipulate some, and I don't mean that disparagingly, but you're talking about a mediation type of thing. How you manipulate issues and develop where the common interest is, so you can try to come up with some resolution and agreement. I mean, this is a legitimate frustration on a part of this business owner. And I take it as very candid and very realistic. And now's the time to really act on it. And the only way you're gonna act on it is by getting everyone at the table to try to see whether something could come to the fore. If it doesn't, then, okay, it, it, everyone's gonna stand on their own by whatever you decide or whatever is left in their hands. But I think it is a problem that has to be addressed immediately and resolved.
Can you speak to how you're proposing that specifically, John?
Well, I never disclose all the strategy, cause.
Timetable, just, for example here.
Timetable would be, a letter goes out this week to the owners with a city manager's signature and the building official's signature, calling for a meeting on such and such a date here. Period.
Right, you have to sit down and see if you can work something out.
Absolutely. There will be an agenda for that meeting.
Hmm, yes.
Presented at that meeting.
Are you amicable with that, Tom?
Yeah, I don't have a problem. This is the situation now. When I started my construction, that's when they bought the place. Okay. If I would've known that this hassle would've happened, I could've bought everything there, both lots. For like $200,000. I could've used half of it for me and the other set. Half, I could say, that's the city parking. Give it to you guys. If I would've known this would've happened. But when they said that it's only gonna be a carry-out place, I figured they're gonna carry it, they're gonna drive by, carry out, go. But that's not the case. The case is, he bought the place, he put outdoor seating, a gazebo, whatever, picnic tables all over. Now, those people required to sit and eat. And they required to park somewhere. Okay, that addition in the back room, remember? You remember when John put it there?
Yep.
You know how he did it? And he was bragging about it when I bought the place. He made it into a patio. As you go in from the old place and you go up a little bit, there's like a little ramp that goes up. Okay? He built that as a patio. And what did he do? He enclosed the place with no permission or nothing, and he was bragging about, oh, how he screwed the city. Okay? I'm not here to do that. I am here to do the place correct the way it's supposed to be done.
Well, we gotta find someone to make Woodpile play fair here, because.
It's not just the Woodpile.
If they're, if they're doing that much business and they bring that many cars in and they don't have the allotted parking space, the problem, I think, is rides on their shoulders, not on taverns.
I, I don't say yes or no on anything like that.
Right.
Because you don't disclose.
Somebody has to hash out, yeah.
The meandering road that comes about when you get in situations like this. I've been in these enough in heavy litigation.
Well, now who?
So, the goal is to getting people to the table first. And getting everyone to recognize they have a self-interest in participating in some manner.
Can I ask another question, Ron? Annie had said, we're here to do what's before us. And I'm reading what's before us at the second show cause. Is there something? All this says is that they're supposed to come here to explain the reasons and difficulties for not completing the work, but there's nothing else on here that says we're supposed to do. So it just says they're supposed to explain. So let me ask the question. Let me ask the question first. What is it specifically? I hear one thing, you're asking for time and space to negotiate this parking issue. That, that's one thing I hear. I asked earlier, cause I'd heard it, like I said, when I went in to eat and the kitchen was closed and I got a earful. I, my understanding is that the kitchen not being able to open is an issue. So let me, well, let me, let me finish. So we have space, time and space to do the parking because he doesn't wanna invest more until it's resolved. That's what I'm hearing, is that correct?
Yes.
There's not a, it's not so much that you don't wanna stay, you don't wanna complete the site plan, whatever. It's that you want this resolved, so you know your investment is.
Yes.
Okay.
I want my investment to be secured.
So are you just asking for time or are you asking for anything else?
I am asking for time. And I'm also asking that there was a lot of mistakes made. Okay, like with a drain system, with a storm drain. We got the permit and then we, we were stopped. And then that's a budget that I didn't have in plan. Now, who's at fault in that? I'm not blaming anybody. But I did it. And that's an extra $30,000 that it cost me out of my pocket. If I was gonna go in the main road, it was gonna be 50,000.
But that still doesn't answer, and you want time, but what else is it? So that's it? You're just asking us for time?
The sign.
What about the sign?
They want it on the ground, which we are acceptable to that. The DDA says that we cannot have a digital sign. We wanna know why we cannot have a digital sign.
The original, the original site plan.
Okay. So that's part of what you want, time? Yeah, actually, go ahead.
I mean, that's a discussion for this board. I think that we need to, there is an ordinance around signs and for variants, it goes to ZBA. So if you wanna do a variance, you'd have to take it to ZBA. Is that correct?
That is an option, yes.
Okay.
But our sign guy did contact someone and they said that it was not allowed.
No. I, I don't know anything about that and, and I would say, don't.
I haven't.
I would say ignore it.
I haven't submitted anything.
So the sign is one thing that might go to ZBA, that's one thing.
It could.
Okay.
Or it evolves some, in some other man.
And then the, so what else is there that we?
Dumpster.
The dumpster, you said you would do regardless.
Of course, I will do everything. I'm not here to deny that I don't wanna do anything.
I understand that. I, I'm not even thinking that you're trying to do that. I'm just trying to establish, so we know what we can do.
Yeah.
We know what we're, we know what we're being asked to do and, and we're just trying to understand what we can do because we can't do anything about the sign. That would have to go to ZBA or whatever else there may be as part of the discussion. But it would have to go to ZBA as far as I can tell, if it's a variance.
Your point is well-taken in that regard.
So I'm just saying, so we can't do anything with that right now if they wanna go for a variance.
It is our responsibility at some point in time to tell you precisely what you can do, which you don't have before you right now.
Oh, people tell me what I can do all the time.
And that evolves out of the discussions that we have and what can be done and what can't.
But I'm back to my question. You're asking for time, what on this list can? I'm back to Annie's point. She keeps asking what some of these things could easily have been done.
Well, and, and this was done in 2015 and you're concerned around the sign. I mean, that, I don't understand why we're having this conversation tonight. Has, has there been a roadblock before? Have you gone through the process?
No, because first of all, we, at, at 2015 is when we started the construction.
Okay.
And instead of.
But that was when the site plan was agreed.
Whole new thing.
Agreed, but that's when the site plan was agreed and that's when these extra items came on your list.
Yes, and then when we had to bring in a gas line, we had to underground drill from Tacoma to bring in a brand-new gas line.
Cause they couldn't even find the gas shut-off valve.
They could not find a lot of things. And they dug up holes and we had to dig back in. So you're talking a lot of time here. They could not even find the main water line, so we had to bring in a brand-new water line.
I, I understand, but three, I'm trying to understand, so three years ago, we're, we're past three years now, aren't we?
Almost.
That we did the site plan approval. So we're here, a show cause is here because some, things were not implemented. And this is the city's opportunity to get those things dealt with. So what we need to understand from staff and the planner is, are we here to take something away tonight? Are we here to table something to a future? What, what would you like us to do?
We, as we explained earlier, we want this board to grant the administration an opportunity and try and work out the issues for the congestion on the site that would alleviate Tom's concerns about completing the site plan. We, I don't believe anybody on this board wants to enforce non-compliance to site plan.
I, I think I, I might need a little bit more specifics on that, just because I, I think as I was just doing a quick head count here, four of the board members here have joined in the last 12 months, right? So there's a whole series of issues here that are necessary to unpack. So to the point about time, I don't know what you mean, Jim, when you say just more administrative ability here. So like, I would like it boiled down to like three things. Like, are we talking about a time period to iron this out? When will we see, see this come back up again? How are you gonna keep us informed? And, and in terms of, I'm sorry, I'm really just referring to staff and I appreciate your concerns and share your frustrations about this. But I think out of respect of everyone else who's also here too, we, we do need to come to some resolution here. So what, what are the specifics that we can make a motion around if, if we're supportive of time?
I had to be intentionally vague, cause I just came into this and maybe two weeks ago or three weeks ago, started thinking about, this is a kerfuffle. So, and there are side issues that are not relevant tonight, but are relevant to the discussion. And so I, the only thing I can say is, my intention would be to send out the invite at the end of this week, Mark's signature, Jim's, no later than Monday. It would set up a date or dates for a meeting. The topics would be basically, in a general sense, Tavern on the Main issues, traffic issues, related congestion issues in that area, very general. And then, we try to work out the format for the discussion internally that would be at that meeting.
Okay, I'm seeing her shaking her head behind you and looking not.
Well, okay.
I'm just trying to, I know you're not still not answering the question, you're just saying.
Can I?
I, I don't understand.
Okay, can I ask a question?
You, two weeks ago, we were supposed to have this on the agenda and you're saying we just figured this out a week ago and it's been up for three years? I'm back to your point. What's the timeline and what are we supposed to do?
And what's the potential precedent? Hold on, what, what's the potential precedent? I understand the frustrations. I know this is a major issue. I understand your concerns around spending more money on a property where you feel like there are issues. But we as a body have to also be concerned about the precedent that that sets for other business owners and other opportunities. So if everybody comes to this board and says, I'm not really sure what business is coming over there, so I'm not gonna finish my site plan, I, I don't understand where that leaves us. I, I'm not asking you to answer, I'm just, I'm for everybody in the room. This is all the things that we have to weigh as well when we have these conversations.
This is pretty simple. Right now, we're, we're basically being held, I'm talking, we're being held hostage to site plan right now, okay? Because of a, well, you're considering a non-compliant business, neighboring business, right? So you're not gonna finish your site plan because of a non-compliant business next door.
I didn't say that.
I know you didn't, but this is really what it's getting to, okay? So, excuse me. I, I don't think we have a choice but to table this until a later date. Otherwise, we're gonna sit here all night talking about the same thing over and over and over again. I think we should bring this group back in a month and give John some time to work through this administratively. And let's just readdress it in a month and see if we can come anywhere. But a non-compliant business, a neighboring business, is no reason not to complete your site plan. But I understand your frustration, I heard it tonight.
Can I speak one more time? The other thing is this now. The, the things that we need to do now is so small, you cannot find people to come out and do a job for $2,000. When the big money was involved, hundreds and 200s and 300, 400, they came out. Finally, I got a striping place that I already have the quote on, that I'm gonna do and I wanna do it before the car show. At least get one thing out of the way, and the dumpster.
I would be more sensitive to that if we weren't talking about a, a site plan that was, that was started three years ago. But I understand your frustration.
Yeah, it is a frustration. I want you to come out and stay one day and see it for yourself. And then you put yourself in my shoes.
I understand. I don't think we're gonna resolve it tonight, that's my point.
We just need some more time so I can finish. First things first, second things second. And you guys just gotta take care of your department too.
We're gonna do the best we can here to get.
Okay, and I'm gonna do the best I can in my.
Penny Loobes, past mayor of Claussen. This is not a new issue for Tom. We've worked with him before and had some meetings, but they were unsatisfactory. Those meetings ended in Tom putting signs in his lot saying, Tavern on the Main parking, your car will be towed if it's not for Tavern on the Main. We didn't do a good job to settle the parking issue and that's why Tom is frustrated. People continue to park there. We continue to do nothing. And I wanted to share that with you, that it has been an ongoing problem. So I think Tom's stance at this time is you city keep asking me to do this, 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 yet you on your end do nothing. So I wanted to provide that little background.
Thank you for the context, but somebody said that there was a show cause hearing in 2017, but that the applicant hasn't been here since 2015? So it seems like there was a missed opportunity. We could have had this conversation.
There was a letter sent out in fif, in 17, I think.
Didn't somebody say this is the second, second show cause hearing, but somebody said they haven't been here since 2015? I just, we maybe could have had this conversation before, but this is the first time I've ever heard about it.
With regards to the planning of the site plan issues and with regards to the, the reason we're here tonight officially on the agenda, the show cause hearing, there are some outstanding items. Originally, the last site plan approval was granted in 2015. I'm reading off the timeline in front of you. Since that time, uh, in the end, a letter was issued in November 2017 summarizing the outstanding issues that needed to be addressed. And it, it indicated that work had to be completed by June of 2018. It is now June of 2018, so the purpose of tonight is to determine why it is that these items that were listed a year ago have not been completed. So your options tonight with specifically regards to the site plan issues, broadly, when it comes to compliance with site plan, everyone runs into different issues and different problems as the construction commences. But however, it's still expected to be completed expeditiously. When it's not completed, then, then that's, that gives this, the show cause gives the opportunity to the applicant to say why it has not been completed. You have the ability to consider if that is a justifiable reason. And if so, my suggestion would be if the applicant can provide a, a outline of a dates of individual tasks that could be completed to eventually get these four, these four outstanding items to completion. I'm not saying fix a timeline on it. I'm saying because obviously the applicant has spent a lot of time, a lot of money. However, uh, this city standpoint is we have to be fair to every property owner that in the past has received site plan approval and had completed their site plans. We have to treat every property owner the same. If there are, if there are outstanding circumstances, please let us know. We will, we will look at your revised timeline. And if the, I would think if the building department is, is satisfactory that, maybe that could be possible. So, cause I think when it comes to the site plan issues, it's just a matter of how much time are we talking about? And if that is sufficient to get to a point where, uh, we can get to a completed site plan. Through regards to the broader issues of the parking, the city, uh, in my brief time with city staff, they've, uh, we've discussed some wide-ranging ideas to address parking in general. Parking in general is a very, uh, serious and important issue for all property owners. So in order to do that, we have come up with some ideas and we would like have that opportunity to, to deal with that at the administrative level. And I do agree that it's important to get everyone at the table. And we would like to think that the ideas we come up with will get them to the table and get that issue that is separate resolved. That's something, if you'd like, we can provide an update to you as we move along. However, with regards to that issue, you know, not to get into another tangent, but in my previous experience, I know typically when it comes to parking and one person parking in another person's lot illegally, that's a private ma, matter between two private parties. I've seen some very creative solutions to that situation. I've seen one property owner allow a tow truck to stay on their property. And the, that tow truck is typically more than happy to do that because the fees they collect from the first tow usually pays for that person's.
And advertising too.
Exactly. And that person's, um, uh, staff. So it, it doesn't incur a cost to the property owner. It allows, uh, it presents a very clear, broad sign as to what's going to happen if someone parks there that is not supposed to. And the tow truck owner, if they get two or three a week, that covers their costs, so.
Is that allowable downtown?
This is a dispute between two private property owners. In my opinion, I'm no attorney, so I don't know, uh, but I would think. I would think that's a.
Issue as far as a commercial, um, um, vehicles being parked in certain parking lots that they shouldn't. That's usually overnight.
It's overnight, the van and vehicle. This is a vehicle be going to be manned. Who knows, just a thought.
Okay.
So at, at an administrative level and working with the property owner, we can come up with some creative opportunities to address as all the concerns he mentioned, but also address that issue administratively.
And I would like to add to that as far as the task, um, as far as what the comprehensive plan is going to be. Because we're probably going to have the same issue with Zeolies when they get off of the ground. That's, I don't, where are they going to park to? Right? And that's going to be the same issue in that section of town. And as far as the adjacent owner, are they going to be a part of the discussion or, okay?
They'll be invited.
Okay.
So for practical purposes, just so I'm kind of just understanding and tracking conversation, my own personal opinion of this is I, I think it makes sense to provide time to figure some of these things out. From, so from where I'm at, not speaking for everybody here, but from where I'm at, are we here to, or are you recommending we, we, we extend the current site plan process? From a technical perspective, what allows us to put the time? Make a motion to table this to some particular date? Six months, three months? What do we?
I think it'd be good to motion, motion it, motion, do a motion to table to definite date in the immediate future. Because that forces us to action. It forces us to give you a report that's more definitive so that you can act on it at that time if it's necessary in one way or another. Either table it further or do something specific at that time.
Two weeks, you're going to need a month.
A month.
A month.
And with regards to that motion, maybe you can include items you'd like to see at that hearing. For example, a schedule from the applicant as to when they believe their timeframe would exist as a draft, just to, for them to take into all their practicalities and see how, how long it would take them to complete these outstanding issues. So, and whatever items the planning commission feels they would need in order to sufficiently address the outstanding site plan issues.
But it doesn't sound to me like they want to address most, or some of those site plan issues until you've addressed the parking. So how do we know how long that's going to take?
Well, hopefully they understand that, that these are, while they, in their mind, it is related from a, from a ordinance standpoint and from the section with regards to show cause, it's specifically about the enforcement of the site plan. So for you and for the planning commission to enact, to, uh, be in compliance with the ordinance, we just have to address the site plan. If at that point in time, the applicant has said, I'm not giving you a schedule, then at that point in time, you have a list of other options that you are available to you to deal with lack of site plan approval.
But they can put a project timeline together, not necessarily dates.
Absolutely, no, no, no.
As far as how long certain things take.
Right. I'm not talking about like the day that an inspector comes, because that can never be calculated. But in, in their mind, in their mind.
Well, that's my point. As far as, we had originally a completion date, this is, these are just my notes. This is from the May 26, 2015, uh, regular meeting, was that the completion date was by end of October. You know, I didn't put down the year. I would assume it was 2015, right? So this is where we are right now. So at that point in time, it was six months to complete all that. And I understand as far as you ran into certain things as far as water line and gas and electrical, right? But now you understand that those hurdles have been passed, right? And so now you have the basics as far as what is required in order to complete. So I guess my expectation would be that you have a project timeline as far as when that starts. I guess it's dependent upon the discussions as far as with you and the city, right? And at least at that point in time, once you get something that you feel comfortable with as far as the time to, to, to start, we can discuss that at the next meeting. Or whenever we choose to bring it back.
And Joan?
Hey, Joan Horton for the DDA. May I just ask a question and maybe just look at, um, a different, ask something different? I think something to, to point out to, is that Tom has never stopped working on his site plan. He never quit and said, okay, I'm just going to stop doing this for a while. He's plotted along faithfully all, all the time. He's made improvements on this property. So he has some issues now that he says he's going to fix, the parking lot, the, the dumpster. We understand and we're all talking here that parking is an issue that, that concerns him and that maybe that's an issue that everybody needs to talk about together because there may have been something the city did to exacerbate that problem. In the meantime, while you work on that, would there be some thought given to allowing him to use the kitchen? I, I don't know what that process could be, if it's even possible. But he's got, he added on a brand new addition onto this building and he still cannot use that kitchen. Is there a process that would allow while you work out this issue of parking and other issues to allow him to at least give him that carrot to work on using that? Just a question. I have no idea. Just a question I want to throw out there.
Well, I have to ask this question. Do we have the authority to do something like that?
We, if you get involved in a discussion on a resolution, you have the authority to consider a recommendation as part of an agreement of a settlement in a resolution to do that. So, but how it comes up and how it's addressed and the fact circumstances about it can't be delineated right now. Cause I don't think you have all the facts to even make a decision. That's not to say it isn't an issue of discussion that, that consummates. Because everything that is a concern to him about what he'd like to do and what he has to do and so forth is a topic on the table. And along with everything else that relates to this whole entire thing from any other business owner. The goal is to get into some mammoth resolution that has significance and certainty. And that's basically what the approach was that I presented tonight. I can't delineate all of the items, but as I was sitting here listening to them, I was certainly thinking about alternatives that exist. But you bring those up at the right time because there are mechanisms already in place.
So I guess at this point, we will table this for a month. And, and letter, as John said, a letter will go out during this week. Try to get everybody to sit down at the table and hash this thing out and see what we can come up with. I'm sorry that it's taken us so long as the city to, to get to this point, you know? Cause I know you've been working very hard on your place and you're a well, very welcome addition to the city of Claussen. We don't want to lose you and we don't want to upset you.
If it continues to become a big headache and a big problem, I have no other choice. I'll complete the necessary things and then I'll leave.
I see your point, yeah.
What am I going to do?
We don't want to see that happen.
I can't, I can't fight it. You know, I'm a sick man. I'm not 30 years old.
Right.
Okay.
None of us are going to be younger.
I'm 63 years old. I can't go out there and get sworn at. What if somebody takes out a gun and shoots me? Or shoots her, or shoots my wife or the other girls. It's ridiculous. I'm sick and tired of putting stickers on cars. I'm sick and tired of telling people this and this. And, and I'm not blaming anybody. But yet I'm blaming everybody.
Yeah, it's, it's a problem. We have to.
Okay, so I'm not blaming myself because I bought a property that's mine. You can't park in the middle of the parking lot and say, oh, it only exists on the outside.
Right.
It's like, I'm coming in your house. I'm in your living room. I'm drinking my scotch. Oh, you only own the aluminum siding. I own the inside. That's what they feel they got there.
Yep.
So I don't know what to do.
Hopefully we can get everybody at the table and sit down.
If we can find a solution, we'll sit down.
And it works something out.
In a nice way and take care of it. I'm not against it.
So we need a motion in order to table this?
Um, please, please use the terminology postpone. If you table it, then you have to vote to bring it off the table.
Yep. Do we just have a consensus as far as postponing?
Do we need a motion? Cause I think what we're asking for is a report back from the administration.
You do want a motion.
Okay.
Next month.
Now, next month, you want the app, or Tom to reappear or you just want the report from administration?
I think the report would suffice, less Tom wants to come here.
I've already got the, the parking lot solved.
Yeah.
That's going to be done.
Well, depending on how your meeting goes, that's an option. And then I do have a sidebar question of mine after we resolve some of this.
Well, we're just postponing.
We're about to postpone.
I make a motion to postpone this for one month for staff to come back and give us an update on the status and we will take it from there.
No later than what they?
August 14th is one month, uh, meeting.
And I have a motion, I have support. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Cussera?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Ms. Prowse?
Yes.
Ms. Scripture? Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Audio?
Why does he have to scream?
Ms. Benton?
Yes.
Hopefully it works something out for you.
I do have a question. Uh,
Yes, sir.
I reserve that till the end. From an engineering standpoint, I know when you bought the item and I know you've invested over what the site plan was. Now, how does it get to this effect of where we can't find things in the city to hook up? And was there an inspection before the purchase? Because some of that should have come up.
That's what I asked. And this thing, the last time I was at the council, I mean, I asked the same thing. Where's the paperwork for the electrical and everything?
From the inspection because we, we as homeowners, you know, if something's wrong, it's got to be fixed before we buy a house.
I couldn't even find the gas shut off there.
I think it is our responsibility in the study to address those issues.
Okay.
Report back to you. Because I don't know whether that's just isolated to this or whether it's possibly endemic to other situations. So you should be aware of that and then you can make whatever actions.
I asked.
Well, the only reason I asked John was because of the amount of money he has over invested and this could have been put to completing all the projects on that.
It should have been completed.
Can I, can I ask you a question? I don't remember.
Oh, it's all right.
Okay, but why has it taken so long for you to get involved in this?
I, I can't, I can't answer that.
The city then?
I'm not involved in all these things.
Well, the attorney, you're the attorney or whatever.
Okay, but.
But this has been brought up for?
I'm not involved in everything. There's been general discussion in the background, but it got to a level that now is problematic.
Finally peaked out, so now we're going to get somewhere with it.
Yeah, and the other thing is even if I would have brought an inspector, they don't know what's behind the wall. You have to take the wall down.
Right.
And each wall that I'm taking down to put up a brand new wall, it's a mess. And instead of spending a thousand, you're spending five thousand.
Oh, yeah.
So.
It's a money pit.
Yeah, and I have to fix it correct. I could have done it. Leave it like it was, but I don't want to do it that way.
But there should have been a site plan for any kind of improvements on that property.
Everything that I have done, I've already done it correct.
So we'll have to check.
Everything was correct.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, thank you, Tom. Just bear with us. We'll see what we can do.
Uh, the next one, uh, is DeSantis.
Agenda item six, yes, show cause hearing for, for 630 North Main Street, which is DeSantis.
Jim advised that he had a courtesy call today.
Yes, um, well, John has submitted the timeline. You can review that. I got an email today that I will read to you and submit to the, uh, court reporter. Hi Jim, I have contacted a number of cement companies, Castle Hill Homes, NLL Concrete, Unique Cement, Qualified Construction, Ready Dig Excavators, Larcia Concrete, Epic Construction, and General Mack Construction. Not too many are interested because they are either too busy or job is too small. We're waiting on a quote from General Mack Construction and have an appointment with Epic Construction this Wednesday. Both companies have stopped by and looked at the job site. Also, both were sent a copy of the blueprint. I will not be able to attend the meeting tonight due to illness. I will keep you updated on the progress. Please place this information. My apologies to the planning commission. Sincerely, Susan DeSantis. That was emailed to me at 11:09 this morning. The outstanding issues on that site are the barrier free ramp, uh, restriping the parking lot and altering the sidewalk to get from the barrier free ramp to, uh, another sidewalk to access the front where they already have a barrier free entrance into the building. So it's getting the barrier free access from the parking lot to the front of the building. It's concrete flatwork and a sloped handicap ramp and striping the parking lot. Why it's important for this board is handicap accessibilities. We are, um, liable for not, um, having that in compliance. If you look at the timeline, this also started in 2015 when they occupied the site without going through the proper channels. We've got it through the channels and this is also a second notice of show cause hearing. They promised in October of 2017 or November of 2017 to complete by June 1st, 2018. If they didn't go out and ask for bids for such a small project, nobody can get a cement contractor this time of year for such a small job. It's probably, uh, 10,000 or less job, but they're already booked through the rest of the season, so, um.
The season end was when?
Uh, you can actually pour up to about November 15th. That's usually when the frost laws kick in, so they can't submit a full 10-yard cement truck. So you can get smaller cement trucks, but the cost of concrete with the additives and that basically doubles. So you can pour year round, but the cost doubles.
I also looked them up this morning and it looked to me like their last site plan approval was in January 10th of 17. Uh, there were five conditions, two that you didn't mention. There's supposed to be boxwood hedges put at the base of their sign. And a tree was supposed to be installed in the right of way on Baker. And it bothers me that this is January of 17, that these conditions relate upon them. And here we are way away. And I don't see any excuse that the concrete work wasn't done.
There are small boxwoods at the base of the sign.
There are.
And all the trees on the public right of way have been installed. There was three along West Baker that have been reduced in height, I believe because of power lines. And then there was an additional one on West Baker that was put onto their property, so.
Okay.
The only outstanding, and then the parking blocks along the back wall. The only outstanding issues I saw today were the barrier free ramp and the concrete flatwork.
What it's, it seems strange to me, it's, it's over a year now to come to us now and say, well, I'm having trouble buying. say, well, I'm having trouble buying concrete. I mean, it's...
What's a concrete platform?
It's a handicap ramp from the parking lot.
Oh, okay. That's the ramp you were talking about.
Up to the existing sidewalk. And then there's a section of sidewalk getting to a different area sidewalk that's blocked with steps.
Okay. That's the ramp. Did we ever get a bond from them?
We have not received a bond from them.
Is it too late in the game to request a bond?
Probably, but I, I...
Because I wanted to bet against...
I wouldn't disregard it. I'd say maybe make a decision to impose bond of ten thousand dollars that it be paid by, and for the concrete work.
Right.
In the handicapped area because we are at risk and can be cited for violation and because she is as well. And also include in that, that it, the amount, the time it should be furnished here and some comment to the effect that if that is not received, then the city will take any appropriate action that it can under the existing circumstances.
Can we back up before we get to the bond? I just want to know if there was one, just because that would have been an easier...
No, there wasn't.
But there wasn't. So, can I ask another, isn't, it's handic, handicap is the big one you just said, right? That's the issue?
Correct.
So, isn't that, that's under code, right? So, isn't that code enforcement? Isn't, can't you find them, right? Without any of this, can't you just go and find them for being out of compliance with handicap, our ordinances?
I, I think that's something, I can say this, and I mentioned to Renas, I think that's something we ought to look at to bring in action just for that.
How hard is that? If they're out of, I mean, code enforcement shows up at my door and tells me I gotta do this or by this date, or I get fined?
Yeah, but maybe something more significant than just a citation.
Well, okay, but can we start there and attach it? I mean, why are we, this has been going on forever. We keep asking at every meeting, what about DeSantis? Why are we about to even let them have a bond or do anything? I mean, code enforce them and, you know...
If, if you want to do that, that's fine. I mean, because the history shows her non, an intention that this is not significant.
I mean, it's kinda like the halfway between saying, get out of the building because you're not in compliance and it...
And I, when I said, well, doing something additional, my, my thought process was, was a district court action that basically goes in on a show cause to shut her down until this is done. And I haven't done the research on that. I've done that in cases, but they've been hazardous residences or buildings. This is not that, of that ilk.
If they are out of sight, if they are not in compliance with the site plan and they haven't finished it by the time they're supposed to, our only option is to tell them to vacate the building, right? Or, or continue to extend indefinitely.
Or take other appropriate action.
Okay, but I, but I'm saying, according to what we have in our statutes and everything, as, under our jurisdiction, our choices are, I'm not code, we're not code enforcement. Our choices are, if you haven't done the site plan by now, you can no longer occupy the building.
That's true.
So, we either agree to postpone or whatever, or table it again, or what, or bond it, or we, or we say, take your appropriate code enforcement actions and table it, or whatever.
No, just say, take your appropriate actions and notify the owner. Period.
I, I'm not sure why we, there's all these options in front of us, and really, these are not our options. We have two options. Get out or let it keep going on forever and giving them pass after pass after pass.
I would hope she takes care of her customers a lot better.
She probably does.
What, what type of business does she have?
Financial services.
I hope they're making money.
So, was she given a TCO? I don't see, how, how did she open? Or she was already...
She went in when she wasn't supposed to, occupied without...
She took over from plea, if I remember right. And then, once they moved, and then that was a de facto, bring, come in front of us because you shouldn't be in the building in the first place.
Correct.
So...
And we let her stay.
And she shouldn't be there now.
So, either, to, as far as I'm concerned, it's why they either kick her out or we give him, he starts coding, or doing code enforcement and finding her, or whatever that takes.
So, there's no certificate of occupancy on this property?
I believe there is a C of O issued on the property based on compliance with the site plan, if, if I remember correctly. Because the inside, inside the building was safe. We had determined that, but we were getting them through the site plan review process.
So, it's a temporary C of O or just a conditional C of O?
I don't know. I'd have to look at that. It, it's, I don't know if it was conditional or temporary.
Either way, they're out of compliance with it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know, you can, you can't issue a permanent C of O when you're out of ADA compliance.
Correct.
So...
That just, is that just administered by the city or does the county get involved in that situation? Is that a federal level, state level? What is that?
Certificate of Occupancy.
No, as far as compliance for ADA.
Yeah.
Uh, actually, it's federal law. ADA is federal law. And then Michigan, State of Michigan has a Michigan Barrier-Free Designs, which is also...
And didn't we incorporate by reference that into our ordinances? The...
It, it is.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, yeah, it's not, okay.
You know, can we bring that to her attention with the law states and then ask for her response in a reasonable period of time?
Say it anyway.
Yeah, that's what, when they went through the site plan review process and engineering review, we told them how, how it is to correct the barrier-free designs and install the handicap ramp and the walkway.
I can't find it in my notes. What was the date that they were here?
Uh, January tenth, seventeen.
I thought it was before that.
It's not in the timeline.
That's what I've seen on the site.
Yeah, it's not, he, he just added it and said something about January tenth, but it's not in the timeline.
January tenth, seventeen.
I have an approved site plan, twelve eleven seventeen, with my signature on it. And I believe I have engineering review showing the barrier-free designs at a later date. Do you want me to look that up?
I, I'm just curious as far as the timeframe, right? As far as, I think we were semi-decent about, you know, establishing timelines, right? And again, it goes back to how long does it take, right? So that if it was done in, in December of, of sixteen, I don't think there was as busy a period of time as far as laying concrete in seventeen as there is maybe now.
Right.
So that normally, we'd have that done by at least start of summer, but whatever.
So, would you like a motion to direct administration to pursue legal?
Yeah, the proper enforcement action.
Right.
And report back to the Planning Commission on the action taken.
But what, I'm sorry, what is the, so the site plan was approved with conditions on one ten seventeen. Is that correct?
I'm showing the finalized site plan that was submitted back to the office was twelve eleven seventeen.
Okay, when did this body approve her site plan? Do we know? And was it with, were these conditions that were done?
The January meetings, the only I could find in the archives online that the...
I can certainly see it happened where I arrived. I don't recall this conversation, at least in the first meeting, so that would have been the first quarter up to maybe June of the year, so I, I'm just going off my own memory.
January tenth, seventeen.
But I, I didn't listen here for it.
Yeah.
The next thing we have on the timeline is that a notice of non-compliant work to be completed was issued ten eighteen seventeen.
Correct.
Was there a response with, so completion to be done by six one?
Six one eighteen.
What, was there a first show cause hearing? Because it's just a second show cause hearing, six twenty-six.
Yeah, that was, um, non-compliance to approve site plan, October eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, was sent to them. I will need a document by November ninth to be included in the Planning Commission packets or your presence at a show cause hearing, November twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen.
But, but nothing came, no timeline came back to the commission between eleven seven and six twenty-six? Did we say anything about you have, was this one of the ones that, I'm just trying to understand, because I think a step is missing, like Commissioner Audia said, did we not issue some kind of timeline between then and now?
I sent them a letter telling them that they had to appear for a show cause or provide reason why they didn't complete their site plan. They submitted documentation back saying they were gonna have everything completed by June and when June has passed. So, this is the second show cause hearing. So, what communication would you want in between us telling them that they had to comply?
They haven't been, I'm trying to understand, so they haven't been in front of the Planning Commission since the site plan was approved on one ten seventeen? So, we haven't been involved in...
No, but they had a notice to provide documentation before November two thousand seventeen or appear for a show cause hearing. They provided that notice saying they were gonna comply.
Okay, so that was in lieu of the first show cause? Okay, I see.
Yeah.
But I'm trying to understand why... Were, were there not, so when they got the, when they sent the letter back into the city, did the city say, okay, we accept that, however, if you don't do that, this is going to happen? Was there anything that said to them, any of the, the consequences we just talked about? I don't know, okay. Does that not normally happen?
No, it's, um, if, either you comply to the site plan or you don't, this is a different situation because they occupied the space before they even told us, or before we even got them in front of you guys. So, I have the attorney saying, take appropriate action. I have a planning commissioner saying, post the property and kick them out of the property.
No, I just said, I said, or cite them.
That's one of the options.
Okay, those are the options. Site, cite them or boot them.
But when, this is what I don't understand, so the, the site plan was approved, these conditions were still outstanding?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's what, when you're, when you go through the site plan review process, it's the plan telling you what you have to do on the site.
Knew.
Correct.
And they knew what would happen if they didn't do this by June, by, first by ten eighteen and then again by June?
Correct.
Okay. That's, I just want to understand.
Or seventeen, yeah.
That they've been given appropriate notice of those consequences? Okay.
So, the excuse not to have a cement contractor able to do the work because they even, they're all busy, it's...
That's now.
That's a, that's a relevant.
That's now.
That's what they should have done back in, well, let's see, a year and a half now.
Okay, I don't entertain a motion if you...
I, I'd say, well, my opinion is that they keep getting fined until they get her in compliance. And if they don't get in compliance by, I don't know, that's a hard thing to say now because they're saying that they can't pour concrete, you know? And the next thing I want to see is somebody come up here and, and, you know, cry me a river as far as like, I can't do my job or I can't pour concrete.
Wait, I didn't hear they couldn't pour concrete. I heard they couldn't pour it for, for the cost they wanted.
No, I heard it because they're too busy.
It's no one's available. Oh, too busy, oh, I thought I heard, okay.
Right, so now they can't, they can't do it, right? So, okay, well, I don't have a time frame.
It's not anybody's fault but the person who didn't book it.
I know, exactly.
While that wasn't an official motion, I would support that opinion.
I, yes. Same here.
You took the words right out of my mouth, George.
Okay, I will make that official motion.
Just so it's out there.
I'm also concerned that we may have a, a business operating that has not applied for a certificate of occupancy.
Right, that's...
Or somebody can come back and say, oh, I sprained my ankle two months ago.
But if they, I mean, if they have a site plan approval, that is their certificate of occupancy, right? That is contingent to having them, that's what I'm trying to understand. They must have been given some kind of T of, or, um, C of O or assumed they had a C of O if that site plan was approved.
Correct. I'd have to check the records. I don't have that information in front of me. I assume it was when they went through the process and this board knew that they were in the building while they were going through the site plan review process, that either it was a temporary C of O or a C of O with conditions that were issued on the property after the decision to approve, is a site plan review approval.
Well, my opinion on the excess procrastinating, I'd go along with Glenn.
I'm with Glenn.
And so, let's take a motion about...
Yeah, make a motion.
And your motion said what exactly?
To find them until they're in compliance.
To find them until they're in compliance.
Or they get out by X date.
Oh, yeah, or get out by X date.
Yes, they don't come...
No, let's not give them that option, just the fine.
No, fine them and, but up to only a certain point.
Yeah, I mean, as far as, okay, so if we, if there's no contractors that can lay concrete between now and freeze laws of mid-November, freeze laws would be lifted sometime in April. So, that would mean that they should have everything completed by May first.
Yeah, March fifteenth, April fifteenth.
So, by May first, if they haven't laid down the appropriate concrete in order to be ADA compliant, ADA compliant.
Then they're out.
Then they're out.
Now, John...
But in the meantime, they're fine.
Well, also as far as, okay, I'll, I'll amend that by saying also being in site plan compliant.
Well, John brought up the option too, that Jim can look for the, the city to take care of it.
The appropriate action, yeah, it's if they don't get a contractor and then the city hires a contractor, but that's, that's to do the work on private property.
Then we don't have a bond for that.
That's, that's why we have the crafty engineers to, to write that kind of stuff.
And what we do in that instance, if we did it, then we immediately file a lien against the property.
Right, right.
If they have not a TCO in place, this, we have to figure this out. How are they operating and what are you taking away? Because otherwise, we need to follow the process we follow for all the TCOs, which is to ask for a bond, get the bond, and hold them to it. I, I'm seeing a lot of different precedents set.
That's why I asked if we had a bond, because I assumed we had the TCO.
Right, but, but we're not getting any clarity about what, how they're actually operating. What's their paperwork?
You're actually correct. You're very sagacious in that, but sometimes there are circumstances when the rule of reasoning with, as you've expressed, seems to go by the board. And this is one of those...
But ADA compliance is an entirely separate issue.
It is.
So, you can do your, the job of finding them like they're supposed to be fined when they're out of compliance with federal, state, and local law, and then we can also say, you know, our part.
Okay, I, I have a motion. Do I have support for that motion?
You betcha, support.
I got a bunch of support for that motion. Got three or four people's support. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cussera?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Ms. Prowse?
Yes.
Ms. Scripture?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Audia?
Yes.
Ms. Fenton?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Agenda item number seven is a show cause hearing regarding one, two, three, eight Anderson Court, which is Western Global.
Both I and Mr. Cussera went and inspected the site. The containers that we had concerns with have been removed, and they did purchase a location in Troy. They hadn't been, they were called in front of you guys because they hadn't been removed when they had promised to. That is resolved. I don't believe anybody from Western Global's here. There is some other issues on the, the site that I will handle as a code enforcement issues. So, I ask that this, I don't even know if they need a vote on it, but the, the issues of the violations of the site plan have, have been resolved.
Just for clarification and future note-taking, what are, where are they out of compliance?
What brought them in, in front of you guys was the exterior storage of their fuel containers, of fuel cells. And then, now that those have been removed, they've altered the green, the green space behind the parking lot. Looks like they added a little dirt storage area for their container units, and there's some debris out there. But it looks like they've been, they had a large volume of stuff that had to be removed. So, they, they have met and complied to what we had the concerns with of the planning commission.
And so, they've taken care of the problem, so we don't need a vote or anything on agenda item seven. We'll just.
I don't, John, they don't need to vote to dismiss it.
No reason to vote on that, no. And we got lucky on that when it worked itself out. Here we go. Agenda item number eight is a show cause hearing regarding ten sixty-eight West Fourteen Mile Road, which is Noble Appliance Center.
This is, the gentleman is here, and he looked really.
You got your plan.
He looked real nervous at the beginning of this meeting, but he is also in compliance. They finished up the landscaping in the back today. So, we have three pictures on that showing that he has complied. And we do have a bond on this one of seven thousand five hundred dollars. So, since he is in compliance, I don't know if we need a vote to say, since he's been found in compliance, to return his bond. Because the city's usually not in the.
Well, do we have the bond, or do you go to a private person?
He, he actually gave us a check for seven thousand five hundred, so we got to give him a check back for seven thousand five hundred. I was informed verbally either today or yesterday that some of the engineering issues between his architect and our engineers haven't been resolved. That's not why we kept the bond. We kept the bond for the landscaping, and that has been planted. And he, he showed that the Black Eyed Susans that he had planted, I don't know if they're going to bloom this season because they're not blooming right now, and I think the rest of them, there's a bud on one of them.
Oh, give them your.
They're awful small for this time of year.
Yeah, next year, you'll be giving us your Black Eyed Susans.
What you're missing now is the, the watering bags. We weren't able to get the watering bags because of the I seventy-five project took all the watering bags.
Gee, what did I say? What did I say?
But I found two.
Great, great.
Were they on the side of the road?
They were attached to a tree. Very nicely done, Neil. Welcome to Claussen. You're doing a great job over there.
Thank you very much.
Annie has a question.
I just have a question. So, is, are we saying then that they're able to use the second floor? Because wasn't that the issue, or is that?
Well, you're thinking.
You're thinking.
Haberman Fabrics.
Oh, Haberman's, sorry, excuse me, okay.
Haberman's have no, no plans currently to use the second floor. I mean, they got ideas pumping, but they're not, it's not their focus right now, so.
Planning like crazy last week too. Things got flowers all over the place.
Oh, yeah.
We don't have to take formal action about that bond. That's just something the city can do, right?
Right.
Yeah, huge.
Return the mic.
They're in compliance, you do what you're going to do, okay.
So, tomorrow, I can do the paperwork.
Can you come up to the microphone?
Thanks.
So, everything was done, obviously. Everything that was on there, the thing on the rooftop, the parking lot needed to be striped, handicap went in, garbage dispo, the thing was reconcreted, right, in front of the.
Brick pavers, front bench, trees on public right of way, landscaping out front, landscaping in back.
Yeah. We actually let Haberman, is that how you say it?
Yeah.
We actually made a deal with them. They cut our grass. They can use our dumpster pad because we have another building in Madison Heights that we keep a forty-yard dumpster at, several of them for recycling and such. So, but what I wanted to know was, does this now give me a full certificate of occupancy, and now the TCO is removed, right? So, this gives me.
This will, yes.
Okay, that's what I really wanted to know. Now, welcome to Claussen.
Now, you're here.
And thank you so much for some of you showing up at the grand opening. It's been a, a great business. It's very successful here in Claussen. We're excited to be here. And we think it's going to be a long-term, very, very good relationship. We actually looked at another building in your place, but not letting anything out of the bag. And the only reason that we didn't get it done by the time that we were supposed to is because we bought a Walmart store and opening up a distribution center.
Really?
So, it's really growing, and we're just happy that this was one of the forums that helped spring that forward.
So, thank you very much.
Great.
Very good. Good luck.
Thank, thank you very much. So, we need to take no action on number eight aside, and we'll return the check to them. We'll move on to agenda item number nine is a show cause hearing regarding three oh nine North Main Street, which is Chutneys.
Chutneys came in and reoccupied the Zorbas, so it didn't come in front of the planning commission. So, there's a couple of ordinances. There's an ordinance that does not allow me to issue temporary CFOs. And there is also an ordinance that gives the planning commission authority to issue or require bonds. So, they opened up without coming in front of you. I issued a full CFO with conditions. The conditions were listed, nine of them, four of them have not been completed. Install masonry base at the ground sign, seal and stripe the parking lot, and properly install handicap parking signs, remove any peeling paint with a typo in the note, remove weeds and debris off the property. And then, I put a question mark, number eight, repair, replace damaged fencing in the dumpster area. I spoke to the neighbor today about his trumpet vines that I couldn't actually inspect the fence. So, he is aware of that, so. So, instead of revoking the CFO and closing down one of our new restaurants, and these gentlemen have been wonderful to work with, there is a part of the ordinance that says that if I have an issue as an administration, I can bring it back in front of the planning commission.
Back?
Or bring it to the planning commission.
What section is that?
It's in the administrative review section of the site plan reviews.
But there's no site plan?
Correct, but this is site plan issues on a full CFO, so.
I'm confused.
The site plan stays with the building?
No.
Now, so that's why it's back in front of you. We wanted to hear whether you wanted, or the gentleman wanted to give an explanation of when they were going to complete the rest of the items and decide if a bond should be issued for the completion of those items. Or if you, I, I do have the option of proceeding with revoking the CFO and closing down the building, which is also an option, but it's not the, I figured I'd bring it in front of this board first before I take that type of action.
The applicant would like to speak to the, or you?
Actually, we are working with contractors. I think a couple of weeks.
We've done some.
Yeah, so, some of the items, there are nine items. Out of nine, we only have three pending. Out of three, the masonry base for the sign is.
Masonry base for a sign.
Yeah.
Ceiling and striping the parking lot.
We are working with the contractor.
Okay, and peeling paint on the building.
Three are the pending.
And weeds and debris, which you have been working on that. It's, it's just grown up lately.
And handicap sign is.
You're correct.
And I think last week, the guy came here for the masonry, required base measurements, what is the size and other. I think he did not get the proper, like, response back. I think someone said the callback by information, and I think he did not get it. Maybe next week he will come and get that information and start working on it.
That may be a situation where I was out of town, and the only people, only thing that people had to go on was the requirements to install a masonry base.
So, no problem doing these items?
Yeah, we don't have any issues, and we can do it.
How's business going?
So far, so good.
Heard rave reviews.
Very good.
Do we need to set a timeline or anything, or just?
Well, I guess this board, I had the option of bringing them in front of you or closing them down. If this board doesn't want to hear this case, but tell me to resolve it within, what, a month?
One month or so.
Does the sign trigger anything as far as our responsibility?
You just have to have a base builder on it.
Okay. Okay.
It's already chopped and.
Yep.
It's okay.
All right.
I have no problem with this. Do you have any?
I don't have a problem with it.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't think I, I don't think I agree with the interpretation of that section. I don't think this should be in front of us at all. So, I kind of have a problem stepping into something I don't necessarily understand our jurisdiction over, unless the city attorney can explain to me or wants to look at that code section. But we can do this, but probably abstain from voting, because I just don't see why we're supposed to be. I don't understand, unless it's because it has a current site plan, or because it's under the old site plan. I mean, what is, somebody explain it to me so I can understand why.
Jim did. I have not looked at the section, so, that he's relying on.
They don't necessarily require our blessing. He was asking for it.
This was an option that I saw as the most business-friendly option, is calling them in front of this board, letting them know how serious it was. And, and the option of if, if they said they couldn't get it done, requiring a bond.
Right, yeah.
And I don't have the authority issue temporary CFOs, so my hands are tied. I'd have to revoke the CFO. And then they'd be operating without certificate of occupancy and have to be closed down.
Is that clear enough for you, Reese?
Nope, but that's okay. Move ahead.
So, Jim, you brought them here to keep the business open, not shut them down, just for us to approve some more time for them to get the improvements done?
Allow, yeah. Give them other options and issue a, a temporary CFO if that was an option, or set a bond, which both of those I don't have the option of doing.
But you've already gave them a CFO with conditions.
Correct.
Right.
And they've gone beyond that timeline, so.
So, what is our, what is our?
If this board doesn't want to act on it.
We got to issue a temporary CFO then, is what you're asking?
Well, that was what I had in, in mind, but it looks like these gentlemen are going to have it resolved in a month. So, I don't know if, if you guys want to issue that and require a bond and that, since it's going to be resolved in a month.
I see no reason to go to that point with it.
The other was just administrative overseeing. That's what you mentioned too, right, Jim?
Correct.
That you would oversee these issues for compliance.
I, I could do it that way. I just, when I had put this together, that was, my thought was a temporary CFO and a bond.
Because I don't see anything major here.
But the issue is they've gone beyond the point now, right? So, they're past the time, and Jim can't issue a temporary CFO. So, because they've missed the deadline, your only options at this point, right, are to basically shut them down because they're not going to be operating with a valid CFO unless we step in and do a TCO. But if we did that, does that not trigger some kind of site plan review?
Maybe, or we, I mean, they went from, it went from Zorbas to Chutneys within like two weeks.
So, there's no. There's no change of use, that's fine.
So, there's no change of use, and it doesn't have the same, that site is outside of city center. So, the, the, the usual, well, the trigger downtown is change of property ownership will trigger site plan review.
Okay.
As if I need a mic. So, I mean, that's, that's what generally triggers site plan review for all our city center properties, is the change of property ownership. And that, even though they have purchased the property, they're not, since they're not in the city center, they weren't required, it's not a change of use, so.
Otherwise, changing their sign, doing anything to the facade, that would trigger site plan review, right?
There are, there are minor.
Facade.
There are minor, there are minor improvements that they can make to their building exterior that is not going to trigger site plan review.
Okay.
So, I, I guess I could maybe, picking up on this, this thread of questioning. I guess what I'm, I might be a little, what I'm struggling to understand here is the COO was granted administratively because, because of the conditions just discussed. Why can't it just be extended administratively? Why does it, why does it come to us for a TCO? I don't, I don't understand that piece of it.
Because the CFO was issued with the conditions, with the deadline, and I would have to take action on those. If I ignored those, I'd be setting the city up and myself up for liability.
But I guess I just don't understand why, is there a process to, to administratively make the decision to extend or amend that with all the proper procedures in place? I guess it's speaking to the similar question, why this is before us. I, I'm, I'm not seeing that, but I just, maybe it's a, a relevant question.
Yeah, it's, I don't know. I'd have to, I don't know a solid answer to that. I guess we could interpret it that way. I would think that that would be illegal, or bending the law a little bit farther than I'm comfortable with.
Without Jim to make all the decisions, we would be a useless board.
Or you could just give them, you know, extend the CFO in perpetuity. It's like, okay, well, just keep doing that, keep doing that.
Sooner or later, somebody's going to, I mean, this board has asked me about when the masonry base is going to be installed on that sign.
But again, isn't that code enforcement? Don't we have a code in place? There was no site plan review. This is not our jurisdiction. Isn't that code enforcement at that point?
Well, there was no site plan review, but it's site issues. It's a zoning ordinance issue to have a ground monument sign with a masonry base.
Under that kind of criteria, we'd be looking at everything that somebody doesn't do right. I mean, you know.
Yeah, but they already, Jim already set a deadline that they've passed, right? So, that's, in my mind, that's the trigger for him to say, okay, I cannot continue to keep giving you conditional CFO, conditional CFO, conditional CFO, right, if they continue to not meet whatever deadline is next, right? And I certainly wouldn't want you to, to do that, because I would like to see the opportunity for us to decide, you know, is it appropriate for us to, to take action? Do we have a trigger that's before us that allows us to take action? Or can we continue to say, okay, thank you, and appreciate your time, and appreciate your energy, and appreciate what you're doing for us, but we're still going to give you back to the city administration to continue this, but make sure you get it done? Is that what I'm hearing?
Pretty much.
That's one of the interpretations, yeah.
So, we want to give them thirty days to complete their.
Well, I, my opinion is we give the administration, thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Give him the right to extend.
I would recommend that city administration see through to working with the applicant to make sure that they complete what was still needed for their certificate of occupancy.
And thank Jim for bringing it to our attention.
Yes.
And they didn't have any problem going into compliance.
Right. So, another one, not necessarily, doesn't need to vote, or do we need a vote to direct him to just continue on as things are going?
Because I think if we take a motion out of that, something that is, that it's our, it's our court, right? Which we're trying to avoid, and that's why I'm saying.
Well, we are extending it, though.
There's a de minimis argument. Doesn't hurt you if you act on it, then are you setting a precedent?
Yeah.
And that's.
So, we just simply say, thank you, Jim, and.
You may just want to say that. And have Jim report to you in, what is it, a month?
One month.
And tell you what the, the outcome is.
Just to show the progress as far as with that. Because my concern is, not to belabor this, but the fact that, you know, we have the allowance of businesses to come into an existing situation, just change of ownership outside of the city center, right? And if we act on this and take it upon ourselves now, guess what? Every time that there's change of ownership, we'll be inundated with this type of thing. And I don't think that's necessarily what we want to, we do. I mean, if it's significant, right? That, that meets those, that threshold of our responsibility, then fine, but not every single one. I think you can do that.
I, I think what you want to do, because you've raised an ambiguity, and I think you want an answer to that. And if you want to direct administration to give you an answer in that situation, so you're not creating a precedent, and you may need to amend the ordinance, then you'll get the result.
I would like clarity on the ordinance. I would like clarity on the situation. So, if we need to adjust the ordinance or whatever, because that's what we're supposed to be doing right now anyways, is looking at our ordinances. So, yes, I would like, but isn't that, you, you count as administration, don't you?
Yeah.
So, somebody's going to come to us and give us an interpretation of that ordinance and explain and clarify.
I'm concerned that you have the authority to issue a CFO with conditions. Are you telling us that you don't have the authority to continue the CFO? To extend it?
theoretically, he could.
That becomes.
Becomes problematic if he.
The city before you, I believe, came on, had given the temporary CFOs, taken it out of my jurisdiction and put it into this board's jurisdiction.
I understand that, but my question is you have the authority to issue a CFO with conditions.
Correct.
You don't have the authority to extend a CFO with conditions. Is that what you're saying?
That was my legal, or my interpretation.
Okay, so then that's why you're standing here today, because you do not want, your options are twofold. You have, you can shut them down, or we can issue them a temporary CFO for thirty days and keep them operating while you work through them, work with them to fulfill these conditions.
That was my thought when I put it on the agenda, yeah.
Okay, so we're granting Jim the ability to do something that he doesn't have the ability to do.
And he doesn't have the ability to, to grant a TCO. Only this board can do that.
Exactly, so that's why, I mean, I almost think we have to vote and give him a thirty-day TCO.
We're going to grant him the ability to extend his.
If he's correct in his interpretation, and I don't think I.
Well, our city attorney's sitting here. I mean.
Well, he does, he just told us he's not sure. He had to look.
I, I'm not going to.
Opine?
Opine. I think, I think you raised a dilemma, and, and it's an uncomfortable practice that even Jim admits, that he's limited in. And if you have those limitations, and you can't correct what is promised to be done and not be done, where are you? So, yeah, I think there's got to be an interpretation of that ordinance or an amendment.
Yeah, we have to look at that, but for now, I think it's simply say, thank you, Jim, and carry on.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in.
Thank you very much. Welcome, welcome to Claussen.
We'll get those things resolved in thirty days. We'll get those things resolved in 30 days.
Okay, thank you.
Item agenda 10 is public discussion. Item is not on the agenda. Anyone from the public wishing to say anything?
Wait, hold on, one second. Was there a motion just made?
No.
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 It's not in our.
No, we just thank Jim.
We prefer not to have it in our jurisdiction.
I understand that, but we can't send those gentlemen away having not resolved.
It's resolved.
It's not resolved if we didn't make a motion. That's the point of this meeting.
They have 30 days to complete the three items that Jim has outstanding.
But that's, no, we were saying it's from, it's Jim's administrative jurisdiction, and we put it back to Jim.
Then we should have made a motion to send it back to Jim, isn't that, there's a procedural piece that I think, because then there's no action plan for you. I mean, you know, but on record, there's no action plan of what just happened, so those folks are going to not know what's happening. And then they'll come back and say, oh, we left, we didn't know, nobody told us.
And I think you leave, I think you leave the record as it is right now. They've left, number one, and number two, the discussion was clear. There's some doubt about.
I don't think the discussion was clear at all. I don't mean.
Well, I'm just saying, from the standpoint of what the discussion has been here, it is clear that there is an issue. It's clear that he's overseeing the continuation of it.
It's clear that I have doubt whether I have the authority to do it, and it's clear that there's doubt whether I have the authority to ask this board to take it over. So we'll have it resolved in 30 days, or we'll tell you what direction we're going in 30 days with enforcement.
Well, let me turn that another way, though, Jim. There's doubt as to whether we would, if you have jurisdiction to turn over, we would have jurisdiction to take it away.
Right.
And I don't think we do, is what I'm saying. So you can't just give and we can't just take without authority.
That's, that'll be something that we'll have to also resolve. I mean, the site is different than actual resolving the ordinance.
But I get your point, Annie. We didn't, I see what you're saying.
So when they, I mean, in 30 days, they come back, what do we say? There's nothing on, on the record of the meeting to say that a motion was made for a specific action for them to follow.
So how does, so how does Jim, how do you give deadlines that are enforceable? Is this arbitrary? We don't have anything on the table that says, okay, this is what he can say. I mean, you potentially say, okay, you've got 360 days to get this done, and the next person comes in, you got 30. But at the same time, it's enforceable, because it's a situation where it's a change of ownership, not change of business, not change of anything that would trigger a site plan review.
I have civil infraction authority, misdemeanor authority, revoking the site plan and removing, or revoking a C of O and vacating the property. It's just an action that we don't want to get in the habit of doing in such a business-friendly community.
Yeah, and again, I guess I don't want to be the one to say, accusing you or saying that, yeah, you're giving somebody longer time. Because we entrust you or doing your due diligence and making sure that projects are completed to the satisfactory and to the degree of which they're meeting all ordinances, so that we're not put at risk, or you or anybody else within the city.
Correct.
But in doing that, you have to be certain the practice has a standard.
Yep.
And consistency, which.
I don't think it's here yet.
It's not there. And so anyone could come in and say, where does he get the right to change?
Yep.
When did, when did Chutney's open? Was it March? February, March?
March 27, 2018. March 27, 2018.
I mean, that's not a lot, and to your point about consistency, we allow folks on the site plan approval to essentially tell us within reason when they can complete it, but they haven't been open very long, and we're threatening to shut them down. And other people have been coming and dragging their feet and using the, the process we allow for years and years and years. So I think that has to be dealt with within the ordinances as well. I don't want to threaten these gentlemen who just opened their doors.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Four months ago, five months ago. That's crazy.
That's why I thought this board was a reasonable option.
I just mean, I'd like to look at that, because we, we either hold, we have to hold people to the same account, whether it's a shorter timeframe or a longer timeframe. We need to be comfortable with one or the other and use that unilaterally. I don't think we can have two processes going forward at the same time.
Yeah, we have to look closely at our site plan approval process here. Like I said before, it's hard to, for a small business coming in, rather, they can't just do minor repairs to their place. They can't just paint it, they can't riff it without opening themselves up to a full site plan approval.
That's not what I'm saying, I'm just saying.
I'm trying to find some happy.
The conditional CFO versus going through site plan approval and saying, oh, I can't do, I can't plant for seven months, I can't do this, I can't do that. And then they come back and sometimes they tell us it's a year before things are done. But when they come open and they haven't met the enforcement pieces, they're only given a few months' time. That doesn't seem fair to me. I'm not saying don't do the work, do the work, trigger the site plan, but be consistent in what we're asking from people. Because we're not giving, I mean, it's very rare that we do what we did tonight and, and take that kind of action at this point.
Okay, at this point, seeing no one from public discussion, I will, I will close public discussion and we'll move on to other business.
I got a few things before other people to speak. The next show cause that could be coming up, I have a CTC, or Christopher Thomas Construction at 616 South Rochester Road. They were supposed to complete their site work by this Sunday, July 15, 2018. And then Sinclair Antiques at 550 South Rochester Road. We're supposed to complete his site plan. I believe he's got, CTC has got a lot. I believe Sinclair Antiques was landscaping, it was supposed to be completed by July 15, 2018. And I believe both of these had come back in front of this board. Or they got the letter that said that they wanted to come back in front of this board and said they'd complete it by those dates. Also, there'll be a code enforcement action taken on 400, the 400 block of South Main. It's been a property that this board's brought to my attention a handful of times. So they have exceeded their deadline of June 30th, so they'll commence code enforcement action on blight issues on that property.
Is that the building, Adam? Charlevoy in Maine?
Yes.
Not CNC bump shot?
No.
No.
Is there anybody else that needs to bring stuff up?
I do, actually, and I, since I, I actually talked to Sinclair Antiques last, last week. He's been having, Tom's been having problems finding the right caliper tree. He can find one and three-quarter, and he can find significantly larger.
Make them smaller.
So, well, he's, Tom wants to, Tom wants to comply. This is the, this is the actual beauty of it. So he was in the process of, he'd found, he finally found a contractor that had said he, no problem, got two and a half, that he could get two and a half. And so I am supposed to get a letter from Tom, and I will, I'll follow up with him this week to see where, exactly where he's at with that. But, you know, if you guys are fine with a slightly smaller caliper tree, that would be one thing, but.
Not to make this an ordinance issue, but sometimes two and a half caliper may be too large for certain types of trees that cannot be transplanted.
Okay.
Say like an oak, if we ever wanted to have an oak, actually.
Suns maple, maybe?
Okay.
I think, I think maples are, I don't think it was an armed maple. I think that was DeSantis. But, um, yeah, so I, yeah, he, maybe they were sugar maples. But I, I know he's trying his very hardest to get the trees the right size. I mean, you know, it's noted on there. The other issue that he was, that he, he wants to, that he needs to finish is the, the screen wall between the, his property and the residents behind it. And he is, he'd like to have, I think his, his plans called for like a composite type of fence. And that has turned into being more costly, so he'd like to put up an actual wood fence. And his carpenter has asked if he can do it in the fall, since he's got a lot of work. So those are the two, those are the discussions that I had with Tom. He's fine, you know, we talked about bonding out those things. He's fine with that.
What would the wood fence look like?
He didn't have a picture of it for me, but I can certainly ask Tom. He's always been more than accommodating.
I guess, in light of that, just as an example, if you've driven south on Rochester Road, past the construction container house. They have a short wooden wall in front that says private residence. So I would imagine people are driving and thinking it's a doctor's office. Which is again, my, part of my point as far as the other thing, but anyway. But that wall is made of wood, from what I can tell.
Okay.
Right, and it's very, it's very pleasing, and it looks like something that could possibly, it's not your standard wooden fence.
Okay.
All right, so, but anyway, that's, I like the look of that, and if anybody else can share that opinion, take a look at it, but.
Well, I'll certainly suggest it to Tom. Like I said, he's always been more than accommodating and really wants to, you know, do the right thing the right way.
So, but yeah, as far as the caliper, yeah, that is, to, to, to assign every single species to that, you're going to run out of options, right? And you're going to go back to the same situation that we've had throughout the city as far as not having certain species survive, or being delegated to just one or two, right? And we want to try and avoid that. Whether or not, we can be a little lenient. Again, certain types of trees can transplant, you know, more easy when they're younger, as opposed to, you know, a taller, more diameter based width, or caliper.
Okay.
All right, so, but anyway, something to consider.
Okay, and I have, I will, thank you, and I will, I will, like I said, I'll communicate with Tom and we'll follow up. And I, I have, I have a little presence for you guys. I mean, they're not super exciting, but they are, they are kind of exciting. So I will distribute them.
So not super, but just kind of.
Are they new cars?
And we're prepared to be kind of excited.
Are they city?
They don't be super excited.
City vehicles?
Ah, no.
Oh, damn.
I'll take an airline bottle about this thing.
Mark sort of jumped at one on lockdown, you guys, and you don't want to drive.
Oh, Suzie, you shouldn't have.
So.
Because I'm a nerd.
Are these filled with the food trucks that are available to come into our city, or?
Uh, no, they are not. These are.
These are a little of our iPads.
Thank you. Government iPads.
That's right.
And just like the government, these aren't yours to add.
What?
They're just writing out?
I'm writing on this.
It's like the library, there's fine.
I am drawing all over these.
Suzie, this is an exciting present.
This is actually awesome.
This is an exciting present.
This is really great.
I'm waiting for the master plan to finish and everything, so you guys can be ready.
Oh, my gosh, Suzie, this is fabulous.
Look at that. They're auto-zone landscaping, that's.
And this is the official, you have the first copies of our master plan, so this is.
And are we supposed to fill everything in after eight with something exciting and it's blank?
It's a space for your contributions.
At our next meeting, I will come up with some sort of, you know, like, it could be like a crossword, like words, if you want.
No, this is really cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzie.
I, you know, I'll keep trying, maybe we can add articles or fun.
I can't wait to read it.
Fun nerdy stuff at the end, if you want.
Will the city be providing hole punching for that?
Tomorrow, not tonight.
I will totally get our administrative clerk on the three-hole punch, because he was a rock star with us.
Actually, no, I can't wait to read it.
But that's all the fun stuff I have for you guys today. It's been long enough.
Thank you for this, and thank you for sending the information, the schoolings that are, the classes that are available.
There's a lot of really good ones on those upcoming classes.
If I can find the time.
I'll be there in our free time.
Yeah, well, we're, you know, not free time, but.
Suzie, I just opened this, and I've got a misspelled word.
Then I'll leave it on the.
Because it's kind of weird that.
No, just kidding, just kidding, just kidding.
The zoning and the DDA, the medical, so it's all good.
It's called an icebreaker.
It's someone else, is what you're saying. No matter what, it's someone else.
That's an icebreaker. No, that's, just kidding, just kidding, no, looks good.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to.
Well, I was, a couple of things. Mr. Ortega, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, we haven't met.
That's right.
This is all, everyone, this is Mario, Mario, this is actually everyone. We only had a chance to meet like a tiny cross section, so Mario's, yeah, Mario's our man. So we like him. We like him.
So far.
So far, so Mario does good work, and I'm, you know, we're happy with him, so.
This is an example, you have no, yeah, no issues moving forward. But I also like to commend the work crew who put the final touches on downtown. The fact that they were able to get that in the day before the Fourth of July.
Yeah, that was awesome.
I saw one of the crew workers, and I just wanted to, you know, say, tell them personally, I appreciate all the hard work that they were doing, and especially as hot as it was when they were doing the final, so that we could have our traditional Fourth of July parade go without any hitches. So I appreciate that.
Before we go on, I just want to raise it, because I'm just, we're on this, we're on this big high from the handbooks.
I know, I know, I should have waited.
Yeah, I'm terrible.
It's okay, go for it.
No, no, I think, I think on this, I think there's like just a couple of things in the course of this meeting that I think we'd really, really good to not lose sight of. I think this particular last issue, and I don't, I know in the case of snout houses, we did make a motion to have the city staff, the staff to look more, look at that, right? In this case, I guess in this case, in this interpretation of the, just in terms of that best practice around this administrative site plan review, like, I don't know if we feel a need to make a motion on that, or really solidify in action a deeper interpretation of that. But I feel that would be helpful. You know, and I think, I think there's just a couple of things, as we've gone through the material, that I think is really well put together for us in preparation with the meetings. I feel like in the context of the, there's things that can change up to the last minute. I totally get that with the show causes. But I think it would have been helpful, I think in a couple of instances, to have a sense of, a clear sense of recommendation, just in writing in terms of review. Because it emerges here in a conversation in a very awkward way, where I don't know, you know, in the first particular case, I was completely lost as to what we were being asked to consider. So there's two separate things, I guess, I'm buzzkilling on. It's one, if we wanted to think about doing a motion or around that question, around a further study or interpretation of the administrative review led by city staff for, for us. And then the second one, just a general comment coming into the meeting in terms of just preparation. And I don't know, you know, there's a lot of questions about TCOs. Did they have a TCO? I think just some bare-bones stuff would be very helpful and move a conversation. So, so I think everybody is.
Because we still don't know if they even had a TCO. We still don't answer that question, Annie's question.
And I don't know what those core elements would be, but some thoughts on that would be awesome. Oh, and Mario, you also offered that, I think in the context of procedures for show causes. I personally would love that.
Can I ask you a question, since we're talking, since you're bringing it up? I'm going to buzzkill with you, but I don't want to buzzkill for too long, because people have kids and want to go home. I just have a simple question. My understanding of a show cause, the word, it's a legal term. It's a legal term, and we are, it's a, it's something that you do in front of a judiciary body, a judge. You go to them and say, we are not a judiciary body. So I've never understood the concept of show cause to begin with, and I, is that even the right language? Is that even the right thing?
From my experience with regards to what is currently in your ordinance, is what other communities tend to do. Other communities do tend to have some type of site plan review, site plan status update, or some mechanism where if an applicant hasn't completed their site plan and complete, passed.
Oh, my God. You giving me the microphone?
Oh, sorry about that. Yeah, I'm not, use without the microphone. Anyway, yes, most, most communities would, would deal with it in a way that puts a timeline on the site plan, an expiration date, and then have, if they, they would choose to, to have an, have some type of administrative review, or excuse me, review in front of the planning commission to allow for extenuating circumstances, so.
What do they call it? They don't call it a show cause. I know they don't.
No, they, I haven't experienced one like that before, but, you know, you didn't, we need the attorney to tell us if utilizing that language is putting us into, putting us in harm's way.
We'll come to us with a question of extension if things aren't working out in a timely manner.
Right, they can always do that, I mean, so.
If they're not coming to us, I think that's our thing, we give. If they're not coming to us, I think that's our thing, is we give them a show cause, which kind of forces them to come in to see us.
Right, and I, and I don't know if, when, when the language is drafted, they might've thought that, oh, well, we'll call it a show cause to lend that air of legality, lend that air of, I don't know why that language is used. There, I assume there was some justification for it.
Section 34-607, effective period of site plan approval. A site plan approval under this division is valid for a period of one year from the date of approval. If an applicant fails to obtain a building permit and/or such other construction permits as may be required for the proposed improvements within one year after site plan approval, the site plan approval shall expire and is of no further force or effect unless extended by the planning commission upon the request of the owner and/or applicant or their agent prior to its expiration. So, we, and, and following this section, we also talk in there about the reactivation, so perhaps this is a better way to do show causes, because I also have never had an experience with the show causes before here.
I'd like to stop calling them show causes, first of all.
I concur. I think that there, we may be able to tweak that, that, those first sentences a little bit. Obtaining to, you know, with the obtaining of a building permit or construction permits, and maybe we say, if you're, if you are not finished with all of it within the year, then it expires, and then you have to go back and reactivate it. And our policy for reactivating site plans is that they pay the same, I mean, it's the same fee for a new site plan as it would be for a reactivated site plan, so perhaps that could be our mechanism.
Cause presumably, if they know they're about to get hit by a fee, not, not kicked out of the building, not all, whatever.
No, but.
But if they have a fine that kicks in after a year if they haven't completed, then, and if they don't come before us and ask for an extension and explain their extenuating circumstances, then the simple answer is, then your site plan is no good anymore, and you have to start from scratch regardless.
Right, and, and that's the best way to do it, is to have something where they're escalating investment they have to make, because they can't just drag their feet and just say, "Oh, give me more time, give me more time."
And then we will be informed as we go along, because there won't be any of this, "What happened here, what happened then?" Cause you had a year, and if you didn't, you either asked for an extension, or you didn't. If you didn't, you no longer have a good site plan, give us a new one, we're done.
And at the same time, by a lot, by even allowing that mechanism, because some communities don't even have that alternative.
Oh.
By doing, by allowing that to, though, I think that is important, because that shows that you're willing to work with people, that sometimes they're extending your circumstances, but.
That's the business-friendly approach.
That's, yeah, that's the business-friendly approach to it, but, you know, you can craft the language where you say, all right, this is, you could lay out the criteria, there, there are a lot of different options. But yes, I think it's something that needs to be looked at, and actually, by clearing it up and by basically being able to provide that simply on a, on a, on a, on a outline for the business owners, they'll know, right under the get-go, these are the rules, this is, this is the playing field you're on, and this is what, how you will be proceeding, so.
Do other communities have anything like an escalating penalty if they do not meet certain dates and continue to not meet those dates?
They usually do that when it, when it comes to a point where they're in front of a body like yourselves, and at that point in time, the motions usually get to the point where they can do that. It get, that gets into the whole idea of whether it's a civil infraction or an actual fee imposed by the city itself. That gets a little bit more to the.
Which is two different things.
Right, and so that's a little bit more of the legalese that I'm not as, I'm, I don't wanna advise you on one way or the other. But those are alternatives.
I mean, cause the point is that if he continues to leave a fee or a fine, as far as not, that fine is not changing, as opposed to if we have something that's.
If it comes a bond, because then you'd go back into site plan review, we'd give them a TCO, and then we'd have a bond assigned for the work that needs to be completed, right? So then we would have a lot of potential C, TCOs and a lot of bonds to take care of, too.
And presumably, in order to make that enforceable, you'd have a firm expiration date. I mean, that would, we, one way to put a dot on it and say, "All right, this is your, your one alternative. We're holding the money, and if it's not by this date, then we'll, we have the money, we will just go and do it, and we will do, do that." And if you don't get it that way, at least that way you're not threatening them with a lien on their property. They're, they know what they have to do, or it's gonna happen.
Do you have any sample language from other ordinances that can mirror what you're talking about, what Glenn was asking?
Yeah, I can definitely.
I mean, cause we're supposed to be looking at our ordinances, and I'd rather not start from scratch, it'd be nice to.
Oh, yeah, no, we wouldn't.
I mean, basically, can we plagiarize someone who did it really well?
I prefer to utilize best practices.
Yes.
Just before we close, I just have one thing to say, which is the issue that came up with Tavern on the Main and their reported concerns to the city, although never, in my understanding, to this body. So, I understand their frustrations, I wanna reiterate that that's a concern, but also that there needs to be some communication between city council to us if there is a concern, so we can help out. Because now I feel like we were put in a very odd place where we couldn't enforce the things that needed to be enforced tonight, because that was hanging over the conversation. So, if, if there's something in the future that needs to happen that city council knows about that does not come in front of this body, like, why is there not a liaison between city council and the planning commission like there is between the planning commission and the ZBA? Is there business that comes up frequently, or is there some kind of communication that we can ensure that in the future that that doesn't happen again? Because I'm very uncomfortable with what was, what happened tonight, because we then immediately went into the next show cause hearing and threatened to shut somebody down for having done less work over a shorter period of time.
Have you seen any liaison between the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals? I have not.
I am, I'm the official liaison.
But I haven't seen any activity.
I'm on both boards. Well, there hasn't been anything, I mean, I'm there to ask questions.
I attend these meetings, and I watch those meetings on video on demand, but, you know, I don't know what one person can actually translate between the two. I mean, if you're interested in seeing what the ZBA does, you can watch them, very.
Well, what I'm saying is, we had.
Watch city council.
We had DDA here, we had the former mayor here pleading the case of the applicant, the city attorney pleading the case of the applicant, and we couldn't do our jobs because of an existing issue that was never resolved by the city council, because they never brought it to us. So, I mean, this is, this is a problem.
It's still a problem that's existing that we can't solve, that they have to.
No, but we would've known about it well in advance of tonight, so we could've dealt with the business at hand tonight. We weren't able to do that, really, I think. The conversation kept stopping every time, because he essentially said he was happy to do the parking lot at the end.
Right.
After all of that, and so the other three items that had nothing to do with the parking lot didn't get touched tonight.
And that gets back to Georgia's buzzkill from the beginning that said, "It would've been nice to have."
Recommendations.
Ahead of time.
I think ahead of time, at least, I mean, I, I, I take Annie's point very well.
Yeah.
But I think even just in the, if the work can't be done, or that liaison type role can't be constructed, at least in the context of being better informed walking into the conversation, there's some of the history.
Although the timelines did help, and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
You were helpful, but I, I'm, I'm on board with Annie's comments on that.
I will now entertain a motion to adjourn if.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
The motion's got support. Roll call, please.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Ms. Prowse?
Yes.
Ms. Scripscher?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Audia?
Yes.
Ms. Fenton?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Casera?
Yes. Thank you, everyone.